Good evening. This is the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. We will start as we usually do with the approval of the agenda. Brian?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda. We have a second from Matt. Are there any discussion? Denise?
Yeah, I just have a slight addition for the policies. In addition to a motion to approve for first read BGA, I'd like to add and BGAR.
So are we doing that as an amendment or are we doing that with the consent of?
I just wanted to add that to the agenda.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right. All right. Other discussion? So all those in favor of approval of the agenda with the addition of BGAR in the policy section? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Anybody who'd like to speak for public comment this evening? On tonight? All right. Then we will move to the approval of minutes. We have, I think, four sets of minutes. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of, what are we doing? It's twelve twenty-one twenty-two. Oh, wait a minute. And, oh, one four twenty-two. Excuse me. Motion to approve, yeah, so the regular minutes of one four twenty-two. We'll start with that.
Okay. And a second from Brian. Is there any discussion changes to the January fourth regular meeting minutes?
I just couldn't remember if this was right or not. At the very end, it said that we adjourned motion past seven zero with the student rep voting in the affirmative. I'm not sure Paige was still here when we ended non-public to end the meeting. She got out of town quickly. So I think that would be the only change is remove the student rep voting in the affirmative from the end.
Other discussion? And just as a clerical correction, the agenda says we would, we have the minutes from January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. These are actually the minutes from January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three that we're looking at. All right. All those in favor with that addition of the approval of the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting minutes? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Next up may be the non-public minutes. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I have a motion from Denise. Second from Brian. Any discussion on these? All those in favor of the non-public minutes from January fourth? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor? Those are approved. And then we have the workshop notes from December twenty-first and the budget hearing minutes from January eleventh. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the December twenty-first workshop minutes or notes, I guess.
We have a motion from Denise. Second from Brian. Any discussion on the workshop minutes? This was the workshop with our members of our state delegation. All those in favor of the December twenty-first workshop minutes? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Those are approved. We have one more. The budget hearing minutes. Brian?
Motion to approve the budget hearing minutes from one, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
A motion from Brian. A second from Denise. Any discussion? All those in favor of the budget hearing minutes? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Good evening. Rebecca Noe from Oyster River High School. So we had our indoor track team go to Boston this weekend, and we had quite a few students that were able to qualify for nationals. So I wanted to make sure I talked about them. So we had Haley Kavanaugh and Mackenzie Cook in the distance events, the three thousand, which I actually think qualifies them for the five K. We had Daniel Doherty in the high jump. And then we had our sprint medley relay. We had Avery Baumgart, Talia Banafato, Erin Carty, and Haley Kavanaugh again. So just very proud of those athletes and their performances. And actually, beyond that, we had quite a few students PR over the weekend. So it was a nice track to run on. So they just did a really good job as an entire team for the boys and the girls. Our eighth grade info night is February second, and that's going to be from six to seven thirty. We'll be having the first community dinner that night. So right before that, that's going to be from five to six thirty. So if people want to go to the community dinner and then come on over for eighth grade information night, and then our program of studies will be out by Monday. And so it'll be online, and I'll send that out in next week's newsletter, but it'll be available before that online. Any questions?
Could you repeat the date and time for the community dinner?
Absolutely. It's also February second. It's from five to six thirty. And then eighth grade info night is six to seven thirty.
Great. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Others from the district? And from the board? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick update. Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett. The pronouns I use are she, her, hers. I'm the diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice coordinator for the district. Just a quick update. We will be reconvening the DIJ community group starting on Tuesday, January thirty-first at six P. M. More information will be sent out to those that participate soon. And that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Others from the district? And from the board?
All right, I'll start. The middle school drama club performed Sousa Cole six times over this past weekend, twice for the middle school, a Friday evening performance, a Saturday matinee, a Saturday evening, and a Sunday matinee, and they were all fabulous. So such an excellent job to our fifth through eighth graders. There were somewhere between seventy and eighty kiddos who participated between cast and crew. And a big thanks to Sarah Coon, Julian Woodward, and Alexander Taylor for all of their tremendously hard work over the past few months and over the weekend.
A couple of months ago, we reviewed a policy that was regarding board officers, and we consolidated a couple of policies into one. Question was raised during that discussion about what about, the policy was about how we, part of the policy was about how we elect officers, and the question came up, well, what about removing officers? And so I looked into that. It's not as easy as we might think because of the way that our policies don't talk about it and the way that they basically say we elect officers for a year. So it, and then we have another policy that says we follow Robert's Rules of Order in the absence of something else in our policy that says otherwise. Robert's Rules require a two-thirds majority to remove a chair temporarily, meaning for the duration of a meeting, and essentially require a trial to remove a chair for malfeasance or other crimes against the organization, is some of the language in the Robert's Rules, which, not that I would expect that to be challenged necessarily if it was clear that that was coming, but it may be worth a policy amendment to make it easier to clarify the process for removing the chair for, should that be needed ever in the future.
All right. We'll move on to district reports. We'll start with the assistant superintendent.
Good evening. Before Rachel comes forward to present the, her part two of her work and her goals for the second half of the year, I just wanted to let people know that one of the projects that we've been working on this year is to ensure that our competencies are updated on our website. And when the pandemic hit, a lot of that updating the website and getting the information out there went on pause. And so the high school has been updating. And if you go to the high school competency-based education page, you'll notice at the top that the high school faculty have been working with Becca to make sure that those competencies are updated. And Jay has been working with faculty to update his document. And it's not up yet because we need to ensure that however we put it up, when we move over to the new website, we're able to shift that information over. So that should be coming up shortly. Jen is helping Jay and the faculty get that information up. And I just wanted to let people know that it'll be updated shortly. Thank you. Rachel?
Before we go there, I'm going to pause.
Yes.
So this is not related to what you were talking about, Suzanne. Under the state law change that went into effect this summer, public comment period needs to remain open for a half an hour, and a member of the public just joined the meeting. Are you, are you here to make a public comment, sir? All right. So please come on up and introduce yourself.
Absolutely.
I was over at the high school, William Hall Durham. I went to, I've been going to hearings on the energy in the state for this last week and the week before. And the consumer advocate spoke before the energy committee. And he, I was, I wanted to bring this to show you. He talked about one building in the state, your high school, and spoke about it in glowing terms. He's been here for a walk around. And on the efficiency, he didn't, I was disappointed he didn't get into the wells for the heat pumps. But he certainly represented it well. And I wanted to add my thing to it, that we're very fortunate to do it when we did, get the vote the night before the shutdown for COVID, get the prices before we started, any number of things like that. As I look back on it, it is just one win after another. So when I saw this, I wanted to come up and say something about it. Thank you. Just a second. No, this is, this is for Dr. Morse.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now we will pick up where we were. And yes.
Got it. Awesome. Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett, she, her, hers, DIJ coordinator for the district. As Suzanne mentioned, this is part two of a presentation that I gave back in December, just in terms of DIJ coordinator position overview. And today, hopefully, we're going to get more into the new semester, what are my new focus goals, and then also give you a brief outline of the teacher DIJ PD plan, which will be exciting. So. So going into spring semester goals, as we can see from fall semester and also from my previous presentation in December, a lot of my initial goals coming into the district were really focused on building connections, learning, you know, about the district, building relationships, and really coordinating with faculty and students and staff to understand how to utilize my position, how my position's going to fit into the district, and what that looks like. And so transitioning into this semester, I've kind of used a lot of the conversations and guidance and things from the needs assessment, and also just different meetings with students and teachers to really formulate these new goals, which I would say are a bit more action-oriented this semester. So as you can see, I have five new goals. I'm going to be coordinating and overseeing the spring visit with musician Tona Brown. We're bringing her in March, and so that's really exciting. I'll also continue to convene and facilitate the superintendent's DIJ community group and the steering committee, creating a teacher DIJ PD plan, which I'm excited to share with you all tonight, you know, designing and implementing those relevant workshops, trainings, and also providing resources outlined in the plan, working on developing DIJ competencies that will continue to be refined as we move into the next academic year, because that's kind of a large project. They won't be competencies for every single grade level, but more mirroring like our SEL competency. So thinking of more broad frameworks that teachers can use to kind of guide them throughout their practices. And then also, a big thing that was brought up to me last semester was updating the transgender and gender expression policy procedure. So we already updated the policy part, but the procedure's still kind of falling behind. And we want to make sure that we match that and adapt it to the current climate and needs. And so all of these goals are going to be used to also be my evaluation metric for my position. Me and the superintendent discussed it and agreed like we would have a summary evaluation about how well I completed these goals. So. Now we're going to get into the exciting part, which is the DIJ PD plan. So from the last presentation, obviously, we went through the teacher's needs assessment, and that served as a huge guiding reference to develop this plan. So I was really grateful that we had so much, so much engagement with the survey because it really helped to frame a lot of the workshops that I'm going to be talking about tonight. So it's going to be sixteen sessions total, covering six different topics. Length time is going to vary depending on the amount in the audience, the needs, and how much I think I can fit within that time period. It's going to be definitely learning outcome focused. It's good to note that although I'll be going over some of the learning outcomes tonight, some of these learning outcomes are subject to change depending on my design and implementation of the actual workshop. But these are the initial guiding learning outcomes that I hope to use to actually design and facilitate the upcoming workshops. They'll be on a monthly basis, hopefully, starting in January, and we'll get to that in a moment, until June two thousand and twenty-three. They'll be held after school. And there's an asterisk next to the first workshop because we had a slight change in plans, and we have to reschedule the first workshop that was scheduled for this upcoming Monday. But we'll still go over what the workshop was intended to be. So our first workshop, I was hoping to kick it off on our teacher workshop day in January, but as I said, we have to reschedule. And so it was going to be for forty-five minutes to an hour. The topic was around demystifying DIJ. So kind of just setting the standard of where we're currently at in terms of the world of DIJ. I think there's a lot of misconceptions about what this work is, what it stands for, how we can justify this work within our district, and also just how we can implement this in the classroom in safe, legal, and effective ways for teachers and students. And so, as you can see here, there's four different learning outcomes. I was going to give one session per school. Now that we're rescheduling it, I might have to group the elementary schools and then the middle school and high school together just to accommodate my schedule and also their schedules. But that was the initial plan. So, and as you can see down there in the small print, in italics, that are, those are themes from the needs assessment. So as I said, like, it was a real guiding force in terms of framing this plan and what a workshop like this really fits into in terms of these themes and how we're hitting those themes. So our next workshop, we are going to be doing Let's Talk About Race in the classroom. And so with this, from the teacher's needs assessment, race was voted number one across all topics of interested, yeah, interested topics that teachers really wanted to learn more about. How can they talk about it in the classroom? How can they navigate difficult dialogue and conversations around it? And so I really wanted to put this one kind of initially and first to kind of start having us think about it. And so some of the key things, you know, we're going to talk about the impact of early socialization on racial bias development, talking about how to navigate those difficult conversations of racism, racism, and then also identifying developmentally appropriate teaching practices for integrating these topics into the classroom, or even how to address them, because I know that has been a concern for a lot of teachers. And so within here, I'm hoping to also input some sample case scenarios that are relevant to the district that will help teachers brainstorm how they would respond to different things that come up in the classroom in terms of the topic of race. And so with that, I am going to do a joint session between the elementaries and then also a session with middle school and high school. March, this is going to be another big one, LGBTQ plus cultural competency training. This will be the only workshop that I will not be designing and facilitating. So we will be bringing in a local organization, Sea Coast Outright, who focuses on LGBTQ plus youth support. And they reached out to me early, like, a month after I started this job because they really wanted to help support this position and figure out ways that they could help support the district. At that time, I was like, I'm still learning how we can kind of utilize you. And now I think is a really great time to bring them in. And they said that they can implement trainings for faculty. So that's what we're hoping to do. They're going to do two sessions, each two hours. It will actually be an hour and a half, with the last half hour being optional, just noting some, since it's going to be after school, noting a lot of people have to pick up kids or, or things like that. And so they'll be doing one session targeted for the elementaries and then another session for middle school and high school. So I'm really excited about that. April, this is another topic that was high up on the list. So thinking about accessibility, thinking about how do we accommodate students with disabilities. I have done workshops on universal design and universal design for learning in the past. And so I thought this would be a really good workshop to bring for teachers in the classroom, to really think about how they're not only maybe, you know, going to meet the needs of students with disabilities, but also just how they can make learning more accessible in general for all students. So I'm really excited about that. And I'm hoping that we can do even a class lesson audit. So after kind of covering the principles of universal design, what it means, you know, and how you can utilize it, maybe even coming, looking at a lesson plan, and then seeing how they could adapt it to make it more aligned with universal design. So really practical implications that I'm hoping to provide. And this will be two uniform sessions, and that will be offered for all teachers. So if they can't make it to one night, they'll have another night that they can come, or vice versa. May, putting the class in classroom. So I know this is a big topic that was also addressed in the needs assessment. So thinking about class and what comes up in the classroom related to that. So I really thought it would be important for us to not only kind of ground us in just state and local school district statistics around income and housing and food insecurity, but also thinking about how many times class-based classroom microaggressions fly under the radar, or a lot of people don't think about them. So that's something that I'm hoping to address in this workshop, and then also go over several different templates, activity templates that are developmentally appropriate, and folks can maybe implement into their classrooms. So if they did want to have a conversation about class or equity, what would that actually look like to put in your classroom? And here's some sample templates. So that, just thinking of the developmentally appropriate nature, I will be having three different sections. One focused on elementary, the other on middle school, and then the last on high school. And then the last one, I am hoping to do a June workshop series, a bias boot camp. And this is kind of actually thinking about UC's comment at the last school board presentation that I gave, and thinking about these different dynamics that play out in bias. And so I thought it would be a really great idea to do a three-part session over three subsequent days. This will be after school's let out. So teachers will hopefully have a bit more time to come. And it will focus on, the first workshop will focus on just early socialization, you know, how we kind of come into bias, what does that look like? The second one will talk about microaggressions and that relation to bias. And then the third one will focus on case studies and role play. So thinking about like, in that moment, how would you actually respond to this? So really grounding it in actively trying to respond. So that's exciting. And so my future presentation, which I will give in May two thousand and twenty-three, the date is still TBD, but that will kind of give my year in review. Also, hopefully, the teacher DIJ PD plan data results, because I will be creating an evaluation for each of the workshops, so then we can get some tangible data where their learning outcomes met. Is there anything to think about in the future? Because we'll be continuing with PD around DIJ in the future. And then also discuss my future goals and ideas for hopefully the summer and next year. Any questions?
I'm just curious if, I assume it's strictly voluntary in terms of teachers choosing to attend these different workshops?
Yeah, definitely. Great question. So it is, all of these workshops are optional as it stands, but we strongly encourage our faculty to attend if they can. So.
And then a second question is, actually, they sound super interesting, at least to me. And I'm wondering if it's possible for board members to potentially attend any of them? Or, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, appropriate or what. But if so, you know, maybe letting us know dates of, and dates and times of when they're actually offered.
I think that would be wonderful, Denise, if the board wants to participate in these workshops.
Yeah. And I'll also add, although this is faculty-focused and specific, I will say, you know, if folks are just interested in learning more, like, they can definitely stop in, participate in the workshop, just recognizing that it's going to be a teacher-focused lens. And I am currently finalizing dates right now. And then I have a longer document that I'll be sending out to teachers so that they'll have an overview of all of them, all of the workshops offered, the workshop descriptions, the learning outcomes, the dates, and then other information around like how to input their PD hours and all that stuff. So that will be coming soon. And I can send a copy to the board if you all would be interested.
A lot of work went into this. Thank you for sharing it with us. And I like how it was based on the needs assessments that so clearly flowed from what the teachers were saying. I wanted to switch topics a little bit on a different type of, you mentioned that your performance evaluation would be based on meeting those six goals, which makes sense. Has there been any thought to, to indicators that are not sort of your role and your performance, but DEIJ-related indicators for the school or district at large? So in terms of operations and, and climate, so student perceptions, the, even connected to the youth risk behavior survey, or surveying teachers beyond those who came to the workshop on their knowledge and their comfort and their self-reporting of skill level, or even the, like, the number of teachers of color that we have in our district. So I know that in the lengthy conversations that we had in hiring a DEIJ coordinator, that was one of the things that came up. And I, you know, wonder where that is in the scheme of things.
I guess I had a clarification question. Do you mean in turn? Do you mean in turn, so, do you mean in terms of how that, all of those aspects fit into my evaluation metric?
I'm separating it from your evaluation metrics. You know, certainly one could say, oh, these are the quantitative goals. We expect this max, this indicator to change by this much for your job. I, I don't, but that's, we also could totally separate them and just use that as a, you know, you manage what you measure. We would have sort of a, a long-term dashboard for the, the school at large.
I can briefly reply, and then if Dr. Moore says anything. But I, I will say, even if we're not separating them, those are my five main goals right, right now for this semester that I'm trying to get done before the end of the semester. However, even as last semester proved, even if I have goals that I have outlined, I definitely am still working on outline projects, meeting with other teachers, doing maybe smaller things that don't fit into the goals. And so I definitely do feel that those fit in with the work that I'll be doing this semester. It just might not be wrapped into the main focus of the goals that I have outlined. I hope that kind of answers your question.
I would just add that they definitely are separate. I mean, Rachel's focus is on teacher professional development and growth, and working with our students. It's not on the district as a whole, so I would separate those two. I wouldn't want to hold Rachel accountable to something that she doesn't control. But taking a measure of where we are, I think periodically, is really important in standardizing that measure, measure. So I can absolutely work with Rachel to figure out what barometer we would use as a district, so we can see district growth.
It seems like the sequence of workshops is fairly deliberate. Does it work for somebody to attend some, but not all? Or are you thinking that there's going to be a cohort that works through all, the, the whole series together?
Yeah, so there's definitely going to be some teachers that are going to make sure that they make it to every single training. But I do think, so I did tackle these deliberately in terms of, for example, I wanted race first, because that was the number one topic that was addressed by teachers. I wanted to bring Sea Coast Outright in early, and then thinking about, you know, building off of that. But I will say, these are not all developmentally synced workshops, besides maybe the bias bootcamp. So that's actually going to have a registration form, just so I can have a clear idea of who's coming. And then I hope that they attend all three sessions. But let's say that you feel like, actually, you're really, you're good with, you know, talking about race in the classroom, but actually you don't really know about, know much about like, class-based microaggressions. So then you might actually want to go to that one instead of, let's talk about race in the classroom. Although I'm a firm believer that you can learn just about anything, anywhere you go. So I would recommend that folks try to make it to as many as they can, even if you feel like you're well-equipped in, in that topic area.
Yeah, good, thank you. And then you mentioned specifically, I think it was the universal design, design, I'm not using the right term.
Yeah, universal design for learning.
That was a sort of a grade-level independent workshop, if I understood correctly.
Yes, yeah.
And then you said the, whatever was, the month after that, which I do not remember, what was in May?
So May was, yes, yes.
Was specifically would-be tailored, elementary, middle school, high school. What about the others? Will they be where you're doing, you know, middle school, high school, separate from the elementary school? Will they be different content? Will they be grade-level specific, or is it going to be similar across the board?
Yeah, so that's great, that's a great question. So most of them, I think, will have the basis content similar. So thinking about frameworks or how we're starting. But for example, I think about like, let's talk about race in the classroom. That's going to look a lot different for elementary school teachers versus maybe middle school and high school, which is why I wanted to be deliberate when thinking about sharing approaches or tangible tools or strategies they could use into the classroom. I wanted to separate those two. And then thinking about the class-based ones, when I'm thinking about sharing developmentally appropriate activities, that's why I wanted to split all the, all the different grades. Yeah.
These goals look great, but they also look like a lot. How are you feeling about them?
Yeah, great question. So I actually feel really good. I would say designing and implementing workshops or presentations is kind of my bread and butter. I even do this on an outside capacity as an independent contractor. So I feel really ready and prepared. I actually already have some tools or former workshops that I can draw from and adapt as needed. So I'm feeling good about it, yeah. Other questions?
I just have a quick comment. They look great. I'm really excited about them, and I'm glad Denise asked if we could come, because I don't think I can make all of them, but I'd like to make some.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Rachel, before you leave the podium, I just want to add that what's not in the goals, I often see staff positions, not from the perspective of what does the job description say, because I find the job descriptions can be limiting. What does the person bring beyond the job description? And one of the things that I've noted that we didn't anticipate, and when we brought Rachel on board, was her ability to present to varied groups. And this past week, she actually presented to the legislature, along with her DEIJ companions, all four of them together. They're small, but they're mighty. And the backdoor compliment that I received from a legislator was that Rachel did such a phenomenal job in presenting the district's perspective, which happens to coincide with hers, around the repeal of HB2, which is the divisive concepts bill. So the legislature is set up now so that they're, every committee is equal 10-10, but the Republicans have the chair, vice chair. And so I just want to say to the board, what a treasure she's been beyond what we hired her for. And while she was at the legislature, Suzanne and I dreamt up another presentation we were going to give to our area superintendents, who invited her and her counterpart in Exeter to look at our local regional goals through the lens of equity. And so she continues to have a presence that's growing and highly regarded and respected. So I just want the board to know, beyond goals, Rachel has added a real presence for Oyster River.
Thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you. All right, superintendent?
Thank you, Michael. Just before we get into the formal presentation on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, in your packet today, I just want to commend, so this is our emergency plan that will be placed in every single classroom in the district. And the idea here is how do teachers react in a, a, a specific emergency? And these were done probably 10 years ago, very dated. And a part of our security plan that we've talked about periodically with the board over the course of the school year was to update this. The language in here is the latest work around school safety, and it was provided to us by Officer Nicolosi, our SRO, along with a conversation with our administrators as to, you know, what it is we wanted in this latest version. And for example, in this version, Alice Training was new. The last time we built this, Alice Training didn't exist. And so I just really wanted to publicly thank Officer Nicolosi for his work on this, and the administrative team for, for their work on this as well. And that's why it's in your packet. And I also wanted to do something that I don't normally do, but I, when Michael asks for commendations, one of the things I'd like to say is, I really want to commend members of the school board for their participation. Heather and Matt, in particular, on Suzical. It's really fun to see school board members participating actively in supporting a performance like that. It's also very validating for the faculty and staff to see board members present at these events. And you all are making such a visible presence of the school board at these events, and people are noticing. So thank you for, for doing that. And then now I'll go to what I said I would be talking about tonight. I'm going to invite Rebecca Noe and Shannon Karen up to the podium. The, we're going to talk about the Youth Risk Survey from the high school perspective. I would share with you that this is a draft. As has happened in previous years, unfortunately, they take a long time to get the finished version of their work out. Sometimes they've actually put it out three or four different times in a given school year. But because this was an important part of the board's goals, I asked Shannon and Rebecca to present the findings from the draft. I imagine the finished goal, version will, will not change dramatically from this, but this is a background, background document that we use in counseling to support the work that we're doing across the district. So Rebecca and Shannon.
Thank you. So first, I did want to talk about briefly how important the YRBS is. It really guides what we do in the school and the district when it comes to mental health, suicidal ideation, drug use, and drug awareness, and many other topics. And so having this data, even though this preliminary, as Dr. Moore said, it probably won't change very much, we can look back now at 17, 2017, 2019, and start to look for trends. And so that's something I'll talk about as we move through the presentation. So just being able to see if our programs are working, are the interventions that we're putting in place, where are those with our kids? Is a slightly different batch of kids each time? But then we get to see what's happening in the district, too. And so, for example, one of the things we'll look at, we were looking at the middle school YRBS. And so those are now our current ninth graders. And so we look at that information, take that into consideration also as we look at the high school data, and then we look at programming, and what do we need to do moving forward? So there are four main topics that we really pulled out of this data, and those were mental health, substance use, bullying, and sexual behaviors and other health issues. One exciting point for me, just because, one thing, I guess that's good that came out of COVID, they are a little off their usual schedule for YRBS. So while we took it in November of 2021, we're actually going to be taking it in April of this year also, because that will put them on the regular schedule. So we'll end up actually getting more data than usual. And so just for us to be able to look at that for our kids and the district, and be able to take that into consideration sooner than waiting two years. So I just, that was something that you should know also. We haven't picked a date in April yet, but we will be doing it again in April. And I'm going to let you introduce yourself really quick.
Hi, Shannon Karen, Director of Counseling at the high school. Thank you for inviting us here. So as Becca said, the four main topics that we'll be talking about, mental health, substance use, bullying, and sexual behaviors and other health, those are the topics that really stood out to us in reviewing the data. Some of the trends over the years, as we're looking through the report, stayed consistent. And these were the areas where we did see some shifting. And we're going to talk about what that looks like, and then how we're addressing those areas. So to start, mental health, this is not a surprise, even before we got the report. And just what we're experiencing, even just anecdotally in our counseling office, in our school, in our classrooms, is that coming from COVID, coming from multiple years of isolation and a pandemic, and the trauma from that, people are struggling. And so this really came through in the results. And so the numbers that really stood out to us, 38% of students reported feeling sad or hopeless every day for two or more weeks, and it impacted their activities. This was up 11% from the 2019 data, the pre-COVID data. 33.5% of students felt their mental health was not good most of the time, or always. And 45.5% of students answered the question about, who answered the question about accessing mental health, help, reported that they never or rarely got help. So the 45% of the students that did answer the question, not the entire school, answered the question. So it's not required that students answer every question in order to move on to the next one. But this one certainly stood out to us, because of the students who are struggling, 45% are not reaching out for help. And that tells us that we need to target and put out more messaging to make them understand where the resources are, and for us to do that outreach and take notice, and to make sure that we're putting supports in place so that they can speak up and, and have places to go. Suicidal ideation and attempts have increased, most notably with females. It's the larger percentage.
So a couple of things I just wanted to add to this piece. Last year, I think just anecdotally, what we heard was exactly what we're seeing in the YRBS results, right? Behaviors in the schools, mental health issues, what teachers are seeing in the classroom, how many of the actual Columbias were done in the school over the course of the year was basically triple that of a normal year. So these numbers match what the experience was. And so it's good to have the numbers, but it's also now understanding what that experience was. One of the things at the beginning of this year, our two child psychologists did a presentation to the faculty, and that was about de-escalation procedures, and what you can do in your classroom. But what struck me, and has really stuck with me since that presentation, was really putting a name on what COVID did to kids. And so basically, students experienced social isolation, chronic stress, trauma, and social communication primarily online and through text messaging. And so to be able to name those things and say what our kids went through, and now see the results of that, just being able to label those things, help people understand it. And now we can even do more with that information. And some of the results of those are what teachers saw, which was interference with attention, concentration, recall, and memory. So one of the comments from many teachers last year was, kids were having a hard time sitting through an 80-minute class. They hadn't done that in over a year. And so just being able, they'd sit there for 20s, they had to go for a walk, and they'd disappear for a little while. But it, it was a common issue. And so I just, I think that presentation and having two experts be able to speak to that, and some of the things we're seeing in kids, and then now have these numbers. And then in the next slide, we'll go over some of the things we're working on to be able to help our kids even more, now that we've been able to see it, label it, have numbers behind it, and what we're doing to help them.
So how are we addressing this? And some of the things are a continuation of services that we even had prior to COVID, such as the call counselor, check-ins with the counselors, referral to outside therapists. But we're also increasing messaging about MTSS referrals, and we're really focusing on building that system. So speaking out to faculty about taking notice of students and making sure that they're not waiting till the end of the day to connect a student with a counselor when needed, and making sure. And that is in, that's not necessarily in response to that 45%, that's not speaking up, but it certainly is in response to us feeling what has been going on. And then that, this data that has come through shows us that that has been needed in really emphasizing the messaging of all faculty, all staff. We really need to focus on building a community where students feel welcome, they feel supported, they feel engaged, they feel encouraged, and they feel noticed. And so when we've spoken to teachers about, when you notice that there's a change in behavior, when you notice that something's going on, please reach out and connect with that counselor. And some students are going to speak up and some won't, but for the adults to help advocate for those students. The advisory program that we're putting into place is that one trusted adult. So again, that community building. And not only with having that adult that is their advisor, that will stay with them for the four years, but also for their peers that will stay with them and build their classroom community. Flex offerings, the counselors have been putting out mindfulness, stress management, self-care, flex offerings in the afternoons, some morning sessions as well. We also have a planner session, and we have goal-setting activities, because we really do work on the three domains, which is the academic, the personal, social, and the post-secondary planning. Because if we can give students that forward-focused and future-focused and hope, and things to look forward to, then we do see positive impacts on their mental health as well. And so helping them to feel engaged in school, and feel excited about their academics, and feel excited for life after high school certainly does have that impact as well. The writing on the stall, we update that every month. And so that is just little tips that are just different themes. And so that could be about self-care, it could be about goal-setting. But in every single one of those writing on the stalls, which is a paper, it goes in the bathroom stall. So when students are in there, they can, they can read. And, but they also have QR codes to be able to make an appointment with their counselor or our lead act. With our lead act being on maternity leave, we feel very supported by having that position. position, and it's been utilized, and she's been phenomenal. She's also doing some proactive work. So in her absence, we've been able to still maintain LADAC services with another LADAC who had a connection with our school last year. So she's been able to offer sessions with the students who still are in need, because that is definitely still something that's in need, and to have that private space. Connect training was the suicide prevention training. And so every faculty and staff member received that training from our mental health professionals in the district, and that happened at the October Teacher Workshop Day. And again, just kind of that regular check-ins. And the mental health has been part of our parent series, so bringing awareness also to families, and really, again, building that community and that homeschool connection as we can.
So the mental health being part of the parent series last year was connect training for parents, so suicidal awareness training for parents. And then this year, it's actually our senate is putting together a mental health panel. And so that'll be coming up soon. Almost hit the wrong button. Okay, so substance use. We broke this into a couple of different categories. So first of all, vaping overall is a trend. This was the area that did surprise me. So I did, I did expect these numbers to actually be higher, and so I was happily surprised that they're all trending down. But vaping in general, the overall trend is down, sixteen percent from two thousand nineteen and five percent from two thousand seventeen. So you do see a bump up and then going down.
Clarification question. When you say down sixteen percent, do you mean that it used to be thirty-six point nine, or that it was sixteen percent higher? So, you know, ten, three percent higher?
It's sixteen percent down.
It was thirty-six percent.
It was thirty, so it's decreased, okay.
Yes, thank you. And then the current data, so this is, remember, this is all from November of twenty-one. The use of vapes within thirty days, ten percent of students, so it was down thirteen percent from the year before. So then that would have been twenty-three percent. So for vaping, for me, I was able, this week, I was able to get the two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen data, looking at classes and looking at males and females. And so I was trying to start to look for trends across the years. So seniors have remained the group with the highest number of students having vaped in the last thirty days. So just being able to look at the class of students was interesting. And then numbers go up as students get older. So from ninth through twelfth grade, over from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, kids, as they go through high school, try a vape more often. And so that was just something I wanted to note. But vaping overall is down significantly. For marijuana, for drug use, eight percent of students report having used marijuana in their lifetime. And then the use of marijuana within the past thirty days was down almost seven percent from two thousand nineteen and down nine percent from two thousand seventeen. So you see that bump up in two thousand nineteen again. The trend from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one was the same as vaping. It goes up each grade level. So in ninth grade, they might try it a little bit. By the time they're seniors, it is more often. There's one change. So in two thousand twenty-one, females were actually trying marijuana more often than males were, and that was new to the trend. That was different. And then trying marijuana before, they were thirteen. There's a pattern of sophomores answering that they tried, and it was, to me, that was odd. Each year, every two years when they took this survey, it was always the sophomores that answered, that they had tried it before being thirteen years old. And so that was just an interesting fact that I'm noticing through the years. I don't know why it would always be the sophomore class. Substances continued. So methamphetamines, heroin, ecstasy, and prescription medication use is extremely low. Some of the grade levels for the YRBS, they'll put an S there if the number was so low they didn't count it, but it wasn't zero. And so I think if some of you remember last year when we were talking about getting a LADAC, and some of the information came from Officer Nicolosi, and it was outside of school. So when they do stops, and there are students who are on stops, and what they found in cars or what students had on them. And so some of these drugs were drugs that were mentioned. And it's just, so the numbers are low, but this is again where our LADAC is extremely important, and you letting us have that position, there our students have access to someone who can help them with that.
And just to clarify, the S is not that they won't count it, it's that they won't report it to us because of anonymity.
For alcohol, students' use within thirty days in binge drinking is trending down. And twenty-three point seven percent of students reported living with someone who had struggled with a substance at one time of their life. And that, so we did try to differentiate, we looked at the number of students who were answering the questions. And so if it was about seven hundred and ninety or more, which would be most of the school, we took that to be the whole school. But if it was below that, we put phrases in there like, who answered the question? And so we wanted to be careful when reporting out those percentages. One of the facts, looking at trends, I did notice ecstasy seems to be the drug out of the ones listed that's used by teens. Sophomores are the ones on the rise for that, and seniors were declining over the two thousand seventeen to twenty-one, twenty-two-one trend. Prescription pill use was trending down, but it seems to be male seniors, who were the, was the group that seemed to try those in that range of seventeen to twenty-one, two thousand seventeen, twenty-two-one. And then I did want to look at what was offered or sold on campus, what kids were experiencing with that. And that was also trending down, from eighteen point nine at its highest percent to fourteen percent. People who were offered something on campus, again, went from ninth to twelfth grade. It was more often, the older that you got. Fourteen percent is still too high. So again, another place where we could use messaging. One of the perceptions, though, when we looked at, so YRBS changes, they have a behavior section on each of the topics, and they have a perception. And so student perceptions of the use of alcohol and the use of drugs was actually more negative, meaning they knew that they were bad. And so I think the positive messaging that's getting out there about illegal use of drugs and alcohol has risen and been good. So our students are getting the right message. The fact they think that their parents, that's a change over the time for the YRBS, that their parents don't approve of either prescription drugs or marijuana or those types of things was also in there. And so the messaging that children are getting is the right messaging we want them to get and that they're using. And so our LADAC, some of the work that she's done, and I'll let Shannon jump in at any point, but presentations at class meetings, presentations to the faculty, and encouraging referrals, one-on-one meetings with students. She was in charge of Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week this year. Evening presentations, we gave, by last year, we were breathing New Hampshire, SRO Nicolosi and our LADAC, both last year and this year, gave a parent presentation in our parent series, and then again, we'll have the mental health presentation. The numbers of substances are trending down overall. And then again, student perceptions of substances use indicate positive effective messaging. And then I did talk to Mr. Quagliari about what he covers in his health classes. And so many of the topics that we're going over tonight are things he does cover in his health classes. So it's just another place in academics where they do have a chance to cover these topics.
And just at our LADAC, she's done these presentations, done these presentations, faculty and student class meetings, because she really wants to put her face out there, she wants to put her name out there, and let students know that they can seek her out confidentially. And she has a higher level of confidentiality. So students can seek her out without having to tell one of us that they are seeking her out. And so she is definitely being utilized. Teachers are reaching out to her, and we're also noticing that even in her absence, teachers are just even reaching out to us with this consistent messaging, that there's these resources and there's these, we're noticing that students need help. And so, so we're recognizing that, we're seeing that there is more outreach and students coming down.
Okay. So bullying. I did not notice any significant change in the statistics for bullying. One was that there was a decline of bullying on school property. I think I would put that to the fact we weren't in school for over a year. There's a piece of that I think we have to own, belongs there. But there is a static number with that. To address bullying, we do have presentations about social media and the use of social media, advisory review the bullying law, and as soon as anything is reported, it is addressed by administration. One thing I did want to note, the YRBS definition of bullying is different than the New Hampshire state law of bullying. So YRBS, it's any type of slapping, hitting, a crude remark, something like that, whereas the New Hampshire state law is much more specific. I know there were questions about that at the last presentation. So I just, I wanted to be able to tell you exactly what that was. And so for New Hampshire, it's a signal, significant event or a pattern of written electronic communication or a physical act or gesture that is directed at another student. It causes harm to person or property, and it also needs to either interfere with education, cause emotional distress, cause a hostile educational environment. So there, it has to do those two different things. And so when we investigate bullying, if someone being hit, that is, could be different than someone being bullied. And so I just wanted to know, and their definition is slightly different than New Hampshire's law.
And sexual behaviors. So what we did notice, the report gives you data regarding sexual risk factors and sexual violence factors. And so the, what really stood out to us in the data is that issues with sexual and dating violence have risen across the board in each of the questions. And this, these were questions about feeling emotionally controlled by someone they were dating, feeling forced into a sexual activity by someone they were dating, forced into a sexual activity in general, and physically, physical aggression as well. And so that data did go up in each of those questions, most notably with female students. With the sexual risk questions, what we noticed, the data was consistent, and the numbers of the students who were reporting between male and female were fairly equal. So students are engaging, male, female students are engaging similarly in sexual behaviors. It's the dating and sexual violence behaviors that is most impacting our female students. This is also most impacting our older students. So the data, it did increase as, through the grade level. So juniors and seniors more impacted.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Yes.
I apologize. Is that a whole school answer, or is that those who answered the question?
That is a, that is a whole school. Sorry. And so to address this...
It depends on the question, because it actually will tell you in the data when you go through what the data is normalized by and which ones get counted. So if it is a sexual activity question, like, did you use a condom, or what kind of birth control you use, there is a way to opt out of the question by saying, I do not engage in this behavior. And then that isn't counted in that percentage. So it depends on the question. But the questions were answered by like seven hundred and ninety-plus of the students on most of these.
And so to address this, the bringing in the bystander program is something we've talked about in other presentations as well. And what it is, is a student-led, student-facilitated program where we're hoping for sophomores to be trained, but we can also train sophomores, juniors, seniors, to facilitate conversations around healthy relationships, speaking up. Is that bringing in the bystander, noticing something, understanding what a healthy relationship is, helping one another, and certainly educating students about what healthy relationships are, and consent around those. And so we are hoping to bring that into advisories this spring. But we will be rolling out this February with Granite State Respect Week, which is also, it's a similar concept. There are activities that last for an entire week, so there will be advisory activities that raise awareness towards teen dating violence. It provides teens with tools and resources for how to address, how to respond, how to prevent harassment and abuse in their peer relationships. It talks about promoting healthy relationships and also connects teens with support services. So there are outside community agencies that students can connect with as well. And then we are looking to bring in a presentation around prom time regarding specifically consent for students, and that will be for juniors and seniors. The bringing in the bystander does target sophomores and sophomore advisories. We have talked about possibly rolling that out into juniors as well, but the idea is with sophomores, and then that is that proactive prevention, that they get it younger, and then the trainers can continue to be trainers and role models in our school as they go on to junior and senior year.
We'll have a little closing, but any questions?
Just, kind of interesting, and I wonder if there's any connection, but, so this, this one was done in fall of two thousand twenty-one, correct?
November of two thousand twenty-one.
And, of course, UNH was closed in the spring of two thousand twenty, and I just, I find it interesting if some of the substance use decrease, you know, the students are on campus, so, you know what I mean? There may not be any connection, but it kind of makes me wonder if potentially there was less, you know, opportunity to interact with older students, I guess.
Do we know when the regional and state data from CDC will be released to go along with this?
Thank you. I heard your voices coming through there. But the state data is not on there, and so I, no, because I had no idea it would take over a year just to get the preliminary.
I did attend a training in January regarding this upcoming, this April, YRBS, and they addressed that issue and had no timeline on when those reports would be out. As soon as they are, we'll let you know.
I think it's, I think it's important to note that the trend, looking back prior to this year, because we don't have the comparison data, but the trends generally follow each other. What's happening in Oyster River is directionally similar to what's happening in the region and in the state. This is not an island, and sometimes I think we kind of think of it that way, that there's some sort of magic bubble around Oyster River, and there's not, that these, we have the same challenges that exist everywhere.
So I did, I was able to go on tonight. I was just curious what they ended up doing with all the data. They do put a national report together by the CDC where they take everything. And so I was just trying to look through that to see if there were some of the things that matched. And it does nationally, the mental health issues follow that bullying being, by girls getting more bullying, cyberbullying and bullying in school than males. So that was a national trend also. So that's something I'd like to look further at, but definitely focusing on Oyster River. But to see is what we're experiencing also, what is being experienced, whether locally, statewide, or nationally.
I waited because I have many questions. All right. So the response rate was eighty-nine percent, and that's really high, right?
Yeah.
That's really great. Do we have, how did we accomplish that, and can we do it again for the April one?
So it's electronic, and so, and just all kids take it in advisory. So parents can opt kids out. I don't think last year we had anybody opt out.
In the mental health, we talked about outside therapist referrals. Are we successful with those? I've understood that there's a lot of backlogs, and it's really hard to find openings. So how is that, how is that going?
It's certainly a challenge, and there are many families who are on wait lists and lengthy wait lists. We have had luck with our LADAC. We had the relationship with her already last year, and when we reached out to her, she was able to make time for, for the students. And they are referred directly through my office.
In, I don't know what grade health is taught at.
Usually tenth, but any grade can take it.
Okay. And then, this one isn't really a question, it's more a comment. I, when I was reading through the sexual and dating violence, I was appalled, and then I was angry, right? One in five of our female students have been, I had it all written down, I'm just, one in five have had someone touch them against their will in some capacity. One in four have been forced by a, someone they are dating to do something against their will. One in ten women, forty percent of women who are dating someone have been, they've had their partner try to emotionally control them. Those numbers appalled me, and I, I don't know what to do. I, you know, you've got things on the list, but the list isn't as big as some of the other lists. The toolboxes don't seem to be as well-developed, and I, I don't know how we get better toolboxes and how we talk about it, because it seems like we need to be talking to more than the rest of sophomores. Because it's, I, I was appalled.
So I will, at, we had a department meeting today where we brought up bringing in the bystander. And so I think one of the things that might, and this is all opinion, but that we were only able to do that program for two years because COVID hit, right? And I, so I do think either that program or doing a program like that where you are helping kids talk about these things and making it something, and one of the department heads did say it's like suicide. It's a taboo word in a lot of places. It's very hard to talk about. Saying the word rape is a very hard word to talk about, and it's not comfortable for people. And so I think, not that it's ever going to be comfortable, but it needs to be okay to talk about those things, and talk about prevention, and talk about, as a female, what your rights are and what no means. And so last year...
and talk about as a female, what your rights are and what no means. And so last year, when we did do, um, conversations around consent, we did have people that weren't comfortable with that. And so as administrators and counselors, we just, if you're a teacher who's not comfortable having this conversation with your advisory, we'll come in. So I went into one of the classrooms and I just told the kids, I want to talk to you like I'm going to talk to my three sons. And so we, we had a program. We followed the program. We asked questions. We had a dialogue. Um, but it does take a level of being a comfort to be able to talk to, to kids about some of those topics. So I think it is helping both kids and adults become more comfortable with that, I think is a piece of it. But also now being able to do this program with fidelity and not have a worldwide pandemic stop everything in its tracks because I think it just gotten momentum going to be able to really, we had strong students that were going in classrooms, training other kids who are really into this program and that it ended. And that was nobody's fault. But I think it's going to take a little bit to get it going again, but that is a major thing I think we can do to help kids recognize what their rights are.
Shannon, um, my question is for you. So the board, um, over the past decade has, lived through these presentations. And as we've lived through these presentations, part of what has happened with your predecessors is that they've identified where our hole in programming is. So we ended up with the board supporting a LIDAC position. We ended up with the board supporting a fourth counselor. We ended up with the board supporting a second psychologist. So you have an advantage and disadvantage this year because you're coming in with fresh eyes. And so from your professional perspective as the director of counseling, do you have the staff to address these issues the way that you would like to? And if you don't, what is the priority that you would want to share with the school board as we move forward into the future?
I appreciate that question. Um, and I appreciate all the support that the board has given to the department over the years, even prior to my time, and has certainly set me up for what I've walked into. And I appreciate that. Um, very competent department. I would say the needs are significant. We are definitely, um, experiencing, uh, high volume of students coming down, often in crisis, often needing to access the on-call counselor, often needing an on-call counselor when the on-call counselor is being utilized. And there's also been some times where then I end up with the third on-call person. Um, and then at the same time, counselors are pulled out of the meetings where we are, um, talking about MTSS referrals. We are talking about connecting with students with interventions. Um, we are talking about proactive programming and flex offerings and how are we going to get into classrooms? Um, and then they're consistently pulled out of almost every single attempt of being proactive in programming. So I would say the biggest need, if there were to be one available, would be an, a mental health counselor to help address the on-call need so that, um, the counselors can be available for all students. And that's what our programming is. That's what, when we had our training, when we went to graduate school, it is hammered into us that our position, we are here for all students, for all aspects of the whole child. And that's why I continue to talk about the three domains, the academic, the personal, social, and the post-secondary planning. Giving students, um, things to look forward to. We have our ELO coordinator talking about, he offers CTE session flexes and that's helping students with career planning. And so it's really the need, the mental health needs that are coming down, um, that then do get in the way or not in the way, but take that time away because it's certainly, it becomes, the crisis becomes the priority. Um, and it's happening so often and so many times in the same day or even in the same period or sometimes the same hour, uh, that it does, um, take away the time for the proactive planning and to then access the students who are not part of this data, who aren't the ones reporting that they're feeling sad or hopeless, um, and who are, you know, in some ways navigating things on their own, um, at times.
Is a mental health counselor a specialized field?
It is.
Okay.
A licensed mental health counselor, um, similar to what our LIDAC is. She specializes in alcohol and drugs. A licensed mental health counselor, um, is, focuses on mental health.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. I had one more question, but I forgot, I guess I direct. Um, are we also looking at how we can connect some of these things with what's happening at the middle school or start taking things and making them consistent down to the middle school so that we're not doing one thing at the middle school and we're doing something else and it doesn't build and it doesn't talk the same? Um, I, I don't know exactly what capacity, but you know, having that conversation about where we can, where we can make things consistent.
Sure. Uh, so part of my role is with the district trio, um, that I serve on with Kim Felch from the middle school and Felicia Sperry at the elementary school. And so we're the district SEL committee. We meet weekly and we do talk about what's happening at the different levels. And our goal is to build that capacity, uh, consistency rather. Uh, we also have our K-12 collaboration meetings and we pull every, uh, mental health professional in our district together for one hour a month, uh, teams meeting. So nobody's leaving their buildings and, um, and traveling. But we, uh, Felicia, Kim and I have really focused on planning those agendas to build that K-12 collaboration, to really talk about what's happening in our schools, where, what's going well, and then how is that going well for you? What, what are the tips and tricks that you're finding? What are the challenges that you're finding? And then we can offer each other some, um, some advice. And not everything is going to work perfectly. What works at the high school might not work at the elementary or the middle school or vice versa. But then we can brainstorm together about what might work, what we might be able to transition and borrow from each other at the different levels. And we continue those conversations. Um, at our, uh, last meeting, we did survey our, the, uh, K-12 group. And, uh, we plan on presenting those results to Dr. Morse, um, Suzanne Philopone and Catherine Plord, um, in an upcoming meeting. We requested a mid-year review to talk about the what's going well and the what are our challenges and, uh, and goals moving forward. And we focused that on SEL, MTSS, uh, on-call counseling needs and really focused on, um, on the NCL, mental health and, uh, just gaining perspective of how can we continue that consistency? So as students are coming up to us, we know where they're coming from. And as students in the elementary school and the professionals in the elementary school are hearing from us, they know what they're preparing their students for. Um, and so really working on that together. What we've also have done, even just to build professional collegiality, um, and that networking, is that when we've done trainings, it is the mental health professionals of this district who led the connect training in October, we had them split out into different grade levels. And so, uh, a high school counselor would have been partnered with a middle school counselor or a middle school counselor partnered with the elementary counselor. And so we're really working on those relationships. And so there is, um, just a natural, um, ability to just reach out to each other and to touch base and to get some, uh, professional consultation too. And I, I think we're starting to notice those relationships building and I think that the kids are going to benefit from that. And we'll see that, um, in the coming years is our hope.
I just have a clarifying question. Are these surveys completely anonymous?
Yes.
Then I guess I just have a suggestion. I've heard a lot of people in my classes talking about how, you know, they're not going to actually answer them the way they're supposed to be. And I think it's really great that we had such a high participation rate. Um, but I think to keep it that high, I feel like we should make it very clear to everyone that these are actually anonymous and that'll make people feel more comfortable answering.
We don't have any information from them until we get the preliminary and there's, we never see names. We never know who answered what. We just know how many kids answered specific questions. We'll be sure to repeat that though in April. Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just thank you again, just the support by the board with the different positions and the LIDAC and knowing that you take this information to heart and our kids to heart and that we feel very supported. So we just, we appreciate that and thank you.
Absolutely.
Dr. Morse, did you have anything else to say about your report?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to, I, I had a commitment to the board to provide a template for, uh, the DEIJ Coordinator Evaluation Form. The process I use is I do use the job description, but I also use the stated goals, uh, to measure performance. And then, um, I always put, I always ask the person I'm evaluating, what wasn't addressed in the goals, what wasn't addressed in the, in the job description that you want emphasized in your evaluation? So that kind of going back to Rachel's, it, it would be the various presentations she's done regionally and statewide that show up nowhere in the job description or in the, um, goals. So it's a narrative assessment and I use the work that you've seen, uh, uh, the first semester from Rachel and the second semester she completes it to build her evaluation. So I'd be glad to answer any questions on that.
I think we touched on that earlier as well. So, thank you. Other items?
That does it for me, Michael.
All right. Anything from the business administrator tonight? Nope. Student representative?
Um, we're going to be having a coffee house on the 26th from 6:30 to 8:30. It's going to be $5 at the door. Um, our senior paint night fundraiser went really well and we just want to give a special thanks to Ms. Rosie, our art teacher. That was really great. I wasn't able to go, but my fellow senior class officers were running that and it was really cool. Um, and then we're going to be having the first ever bobcat battle lip sync competition of the ages, um, which will be held the evening of February 15th and all proceeds of that event will go to the nurses fund. So we're really hoping to make that a tradition. That's kind of a all classes collaborating to make that happen.
Is that going to be here?
Um, I'm not sure where that's going to be yet, actually.
We, we have a meeting that night. So we could.
I would assume it's going to be in the high school auditorium.
We, should we, we could move our meeting to, will, will you be competing?
No.
All right. Thank you very much, Paige. Uh, no finance committee report tonight? All right. We'll move to unanimous consent. Um, anybody want to discuss this item separately? Not. I move for approval of the extension of the middle school maternity leave of absence previously approved to the end of January out to March 31st, 2023. A second from Matt. All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor that maternity leave is approved. All right. Discussion and action items. Would you like to introduce this next item, Dr. Morse?
Sure. This is, um, with deep, deep sadness that I present to you the, um, retirement letter of Sue Caswell. Sue Caswell has been an amazing partner for me over the course of 11 years and so many budgets that it all kind of blends together now. But, um, we always, uh, did phenomenal work together and clearly the communities as they voted supported, uh, that work. Uh, so, um, I submit Sue's letter of retirement with deep sadness.
Heather?
I motion to accept the business administrator's letter of retirement.
We have a motion from Heather and a second from Brian. Any discussion?
Um, you know, when you lose someone with the experience that, that Sue has, it's, it's a lot of institutional knowledge. And, um, when you, but you only see her here. When you see her outside this bubble that we're in, um, you really see where she shines. And she's our past president for New Hampshire Association of School Business Officials. And she's been, was a phenomenal president. Um, she led me, um, to become an executive board member for NASBO. Um, I can honestly say I'm, I'm a business administrator because of her, um, because of, you know, she was able to sit down with me and I watched her over the years and been very impressed with how she, how she operates and presents herself. And, um, it's going to be a huge loss for this district. It's going to be big shoes to fill, but she is a much bigger force in the state and very well respected in the state, um, probably even more so than she is here. So I just didn't want that to go unsaid because she is, she's the best. We will miss her.
It is definitely the sort of role that when it is done really, really well, it is easy to overlook. Not that we should, but, um, but it's been, it's been a pleasure to be, have worked with Sue. And I know we'll have a chance to, we, we've still got several months, so we're not done yet. But, um, I, I, I always wonder with some of these things, what happens if the board votes not to accept a letter of resignation?
Well, Michael, I, the reason you got the letter in the first place is because I asked Sue several times as she was trying to get it out on paper, do you have the letter? Because I need to present it to the board. And I talked to Michael, um, and I said, I don't have the letter yet. And she said, just tell her. She doesn't get the letter due by Friday. She's, it's going to stay another year. That got the letter.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to accept the business administrator's letter of retirement. Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. All right. Uh, 2023 warrant articles. So we have the biz, we had the budget hearing last week and we have the warrant articles and the budget to, um, to approve what will go to the deliberative session. Um, so we're looking for a motion first for the warrant articles and then for the MS 26 for the budget. Brian?
Make a motion to approve and sign the 2023 warrant article as presented.
Got a motion from Brian, second from Matt. Any discussion on the warrant articles?
I agree.
I have here a hard copy with your names on them. If we approve this motion, please sign this in the slot with your name directly below, the line that has your name below the line. All those in favor, what's it? You would be surprised.
There's a history behind that.
All those in favor of approving the warrant articles? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. And we have the MS 26 for the deliberative session. Brian?
Motion to adopt the, um, MS 26, the deliberative session.
Motion from Brian, second from Matt. Discussion on the MS 26. Similarly, there is a line, only this time it's not below, it's adjacent to your name. It is different. All those in favor of approving the MS 26? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. All right. Um, next up is retirement incentive. So we have a number of, uh, we have a recommendation from the superintendent for, um, to accept the retirement incentive from certain individuals. Um, we would like to recognize those individuals at a future meeting, most likely after the budget is approved for next year. Um, but in the meantime, we'd like to, uh, ask the board to act on accepting those retirements. Brian?
A motion to accept the recipients of participating in the retirement incentive opportunity.
We have a motion from mine and a second from Matt. Any discussion?
Michael, I have one thing. I just wanted to be clear because I know we did this two years ago. There were people out there that thought we were forcing people to take a retirement incentive. I just want to be clear that this is voluntary. Um, you know, I'm not going to mention their names, but, uh, I'm sure we will at a later time that there's a lot of institutional knowledge in this group that has done phenomenal things for this district. And, um, I look forward to actually recognizing them at a future time. But I just want to be clear that it is voluntary for anyone who's watching.
Further discussion? All right. All those in favor of accepting the, um, the retirement incentive recommendation from the superintendent? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. All right. And here are the, the warrant and the, um, MS 26 for signatures. All right. Um, all right. Yes, you're right. So next up is policy. Denise?
Right. So, um, what we have for approval for first three tonight is policy BGA, which is Policy Development System. And then, um, I did ask as well for us to approve the R, which is the procedure. And the reason for that, we don't typically approve, um, procedures, but this is a specifically how we do, uh, policy. Um, it's a board policy. And, um, in addition to that, we actually, uh, took another policy, which was BGC, um, and are proposing to delete that and incorporate that into the procedure for BGA. So having said that, I don't know if there are, um, questions about. So having said that, I don't know if there are questions about that. So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve for first read, policy BGA, and the procedure BGAR, and then BGC for deletion.
We have a motion from Denise and a second from Matt. Discussion on the policies? On, on BGA, Policy Development System, in paragraph A, which is the one that's being edited there, this is not part of the changes, but this paragraph says that "The board may adopt, amend, or appeal written policies at any meeting by a majority vote of board members in attendance." And I would prefer that that's a majority vote of the full board. I, I, it makes me uncomfortable to think that a, you know, if we have a quorum of four or five members, that means that three people can change policy. And I, I don't think that is the right way to do things. So I would like to see that changed to be, instead of a majority vote of the, of board members in attendance to be a majority vote of a full board. Heather?
So I'd be your devil's advocate on that one. Kenny Rotner was a board member for a long time where he missed a substantial amount of meetings to, to his treatment. In your scenario, the board wouldn't be able to adopt policy for that time length because he wouldn't be at the meetings to make the full board.
I, I don't mean that the full board should be at the, at the meeting. I mean that the, the policy change should be approved by at least four members, a majority of the full board, not, not a majority of the board members present. And I guess I would, shall I, I can move that as an amendment if it would be... All right, I, I move to amend BGA, paragraph A, to change a majority vote of board members in attendance to a majority vote of all board members. Brian, second? Discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor? Any further discussion on the, the policy? All those in favor of the policy? This is, this is for all, all, all three, BGA, BGA dash R, and deletion of BGC. All those in favor of approval and deletion? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor? All right. All right, do we have any committee updates tonight? Heather?
So Sustainability Committee met yesterday because I'm trying to maximize my time with Sue as much as possible before she retires. We talked about our four goals, and I'm going to recap two of them. On the reduced waste front, composting has started in the classrooms at MoHaramit, and the second graders who helped deploy those bins are very excited about it. The middle school is working on a composting plan. They're still trying to figure out the classroom versus pod versus size versus fruit flies conversation. So there's things cooking on that one. But there is a consistent amount of contamination that is happening in the lunchroom composting bins due to students commingling compost, trash, and recycling, which means that the compost becomes unusable. And so there are several efforts, working on informational campaigns about the importance of composting, its impact, and how, working on reducing that level of contamination. So that's on one of the goals. And the other one is the community dinner. And Noe, stole part of my thunder, but that's okay, I'll forgive her. So that is Thursday, February 2nd, from 5:00 to 6:30 in the Oyster River High School cafeteria. The cost is $8 per person or $20 per family. The menu is spaghetti with either marinara sauce or beef sauce made with local beef, a locally sourced salad, and some sort of dessert. Doris was still working on that one. Around the cafeteria, there are going to be information tables from local farmers, student groups, representative from Mr. Fox Composting will be there, and the town, I think we're going to try to get as many folks as we can, but I think Durham, pretty, pretty certain about that one, and maybe we, their waste management committees to come in and talk to folks who want to talk to them as they go around. And it should be a really great night, and the High School Sustainability Club is going to give a very short presentation somewhere around, I think, 5:30, and should be good food and a really nice chance to get and meet as a community again, and something we haven't been able to do since COVID. And I don't know about you, but my family of four, if you're eating for 20 bucks, sign me up. And then the last bit is that our next Sustainability Committee meeting is on February 9th at 4:30 at the middle school.
Other committee updates? Is there anybody who would like to speak at public comment before we close this evening? All right, none? Closing actions, you can see up, the upcoming meetings here. Our next regular meeting is February 1st, and then we have the deliberative session on February 7th, whether permitting right here in the middle school recital hall. We, the school board has some work to do on the superintendent's evaluation tonight, so I will move that we enter non-public session under New Hampshire RSA, Chapter 91A, Section 3, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself. Brian has seconded that, this requires a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes. UC Terrell, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. We will enter non-public session, there will be nothing else except for adjournment when we come back.